That gets us to item number 35. We have six folks signed up to speak on item number 35. I'll go ahead and call them. Is Teresa Blackman here? And while Ms. Blackman comes down, the next speaker will be Lisa Aven. Or is Lisa Aven here? Okay. Go ahead, Deb. You have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Teresa Blackman. Commission, this is one thing that a lot of people don't understand. Homeless population is very risky right now. Only thing I'm asking you all to do is just take the inside look of the shelters that we are staying in right now. Reason why I say that is shelters is not fittable for us. I just want you all to take one day out of your time to come live on the streets of Austin. Reason why I say that is because we're a people. We bleed. We cry. We asking you all to help us with this homeless population. And to my terms, I've been doing this for years. It's not my first rodeo ride of being homeless. Some people there, they came with me today. They're speaking out. And I don't think I'm asking you all, each and one of you all, take one day of your time to just come live in a shelter and see how you would like it. It hurts. We gotta come out here every day, get criticized by people that we don't even know. Why are y'all criticizing us? We're not out here being violent, killing people. No, we're people. I did a document in 2010, Tent City, USA. Check that out. I'm asking you all, one day, just come out and live out on the street of Austin. You gotta think where your next meal gonna come from? How you gonna wash your clothes? Some of y'all thinking back in your head, oh, this is just something we don't really wanna care to hear about. But really, in reality, you're not going to end the homeless population if you keep putting thousands of dollars in buildings and putting it here and there and everywhere else. Why don't you think about the people that are living on the streets? Why don't you think about the people that stays in the shelter every day? Why don't you think about families that needs help? Think about people that has own disability. Think about people that just go from shelter to shelter, life to life. I didn't choose to be homeless. My family put me there. And I don't think I'm asking you all to take one day out of your time just to come out and venture the homeless population. But you gotta understand and realize, we're people. We bleed the same way, we cry the same way, we put on our clothes the same way. Women, it's not safe for a woman to be living out on the street. It's not safe.
Thank you. Ms. Blackman, thank you for coming down. Ms. Aven?
Yes.
Is Deborah Nugent here? You'll be up next. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
And thank you for your time. My name is Lisa Aven. Two years ago, I was a truck driver. I had a job. I had a home, a car, bills, a life. I don't have that now. I'm a homeless person. And in your eyes, I'm somebody you walk across the street to avoid. I'm somebody you sweep under the carpet. I'm somebody you pity. I'm a person with a brain. I'm not an alcoholic. I don't do drugs and never have. I'm not one of those people. And yeah, there are those people out there. But the reason they're that way is because you people turn your head, you don't wanna see the ugliness, but you know what? We don't wanna see it either. Unfortunately, we have to live it. So, take the money, give it to somebody who's just going to spend it correctly and not put it in their pockets. And help us. Thank you.
Aven, thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. Ms. Nugent, why don't you come on up? The next speaker is gonna be Clifford Mishler. Is Mr. Mishler here? Thank you, sir. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
My name's Deborah Nugent. I stay at Salvation Army. And I wanna say in their favor that they are bearing an enormous burden for almost the whole area. And there needs to be more help here in Austin. The community needs to come together as a whole. I became homeless seven years ago when my husband, my husband's job was downsized under the Obama administration. And I've been homeless ever since. I've been staying in shelters. And I wanna talk about the fact that we don't need to outsource someone to come in and help with homelessness. We, as a community, can do it by bringing together churches and human resources and various organizations, to invest in buildings, to house the homeless. Just give them a room. That's all they need. And do it for free because they can't just pull themselves up by the bootstraps. There are times in society when people become disenfranchised due to social and economic changes that they have no control over, and they can't get back in. And they need to be lifted out of homelessness. And I wanna address the fact that this is not socialism, it's not communism, it's being conservative. It's using human resources in a positive way and helping them to get on their feet by finding productive work that they can do, even if it's making furniture or artwork or something like that. Because many of the homeless are disenfranchised or can't get back in the workforce because they have some trait or some flaw that keeps them out of the social world. Sometimes it's being handicapped, sometimes it's psychological problems. It's drugs and alcohol, less than you would think. It's a problem that exists in and of itself without drugs or alcohol, and it's not a choice. Addiction is a choice. Drunk driving is a choice. Homelessness is not a choice. Therefore, the community, not the government, the community needs to come together and fix this by providing space for living. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nugent. Mr. Mishler, why don't you come on up? And while he comes up, the next speaker is Kristi Thompson.
Good morning, Mr. Adler. If I'm not wrong, your last name in German means eagle. Yeah? I'm not homeless because I wanna be homeless. I'm homeless because of an emotional problem I had. My wife died about four years ago, after this, my dad, my mom, and then my grandmother. Yeah? I got, ten years ago, I got stabbed. They stole me $25,000. I have a colostomy for the rest of my life. In Austin, most people don't even know what that means. Yeah? Anywhere I go for help, it's, everything is bureaucracy. Yeah? Everything is a pushover, go there, go there, go over there. How is that gonna stop? I do not drink. I never have drank in my whole life. I never have done drugs in my whole life. I never have been arrested in 57 years. I have a clean record. Yeah? Everywhere I go on the corners on the street, I see drugs all over the city of Austin. Why does the police officers not defeat the drugs? Can you explain me why? They give me a ticket to bike a who makes a long turn. And on the arch, there are people having backpacks huge, full of drugs. They don't do nothing. But they worry about kicking homeless people out on the bridge, kicking them out where they're staying at because they have no place to go. When is this gonna change? When does the city really gonna put their hand on their heart and say, we have to help them? How long you gonna be sitting all over there listening to us? Probably nothing gonna be happens. Because you don't worry about homeless. You worry about your own sake. And that's supposed to not be happening. Thank you. Have a grateful day.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Mishler. Ms. Thompson, why don't you come on up? Is Brian Thornton here? He'll be up next. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
My story is similar to Lisa's in that I had a home, a car, et cetera. September 20, I was in a near fatal car wreck with my wife, who suffered severe injuries. Her pelvis was fractured in five places, all the way across. Her hip was dislocated, and her knee has been rebuilt. She's rehabilitating and unable to be here today. That put us in a homeless position. I did a little homework in researching this gentleman in which you're looking to pay as an expert, though I don't see anything of him suffering any struggles. I don't see where he may have even had to buy his own car as a teenager. My point is, how is he an expert in homelessness when you have experts right here? You have experts all over the street. Do you take the time to ask them with compassion how they find their food and their medical care or housing? How they came to be on the street? I've experienced horrendous treatments, both in a shelter here in town and on the street. To experience another human being treating another human being like they're of more importance than the other is an atrocity that I would never put on another human being. And it's really sad to see it over and over and over throughout the course of a day. I am a full-time employee. In fact, my wife has trudged through, and she's back so that we can get ourselves back on course. But it's very difficult in the position that we are in because of the lack of housing, the lack of resources within the shelter that we stay. We just ask that, with compassion, you consider or reconsider this money being spent more wisely. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Thornton. I live and work in District 9. I agree with the last speaker. I'm opposed to this contract. With this contract, ourselves and Mr. Doherty up for failure. After looking at the backup, listening in on work session on Tuesday, and reading some recent news, questions arose in my mind. And I kinda wanna back up. It seems the decision of Ms. Pompeo Harris seems to have derailed our focus. We initially wanted someone who would live in Austin and become immersed in the issues that we're facing. But now we seem to be hiring a patchwork of high-paid consultants, one of whom, at issue, seems to have another contract with the state of California and is potentially going to be operating out of Washington, DC. Helping California solve their homelessness problems is a monumental task, and I just don't understand how we're going to expect someone reasonably to assess, offer solutions, and execute solutions in eight months when the state of California, it looks like, is potentially another one of their clients. I'm not sure that Austin is going to be the priority in that scenario. I think we, in short, have lost our way and need to get back to our original focus of hiring a full-time homelessness services officer. On top of that, homelessness increased nationally under Mr. Doherty's tenure on the U.S. Interagency Council for Homelessness. New data suggests that that is because of the previous administration's strict focus on a housing-first approach, which decoupled housing services and treatment. And it appears that that conventional wisdom needs to be rethought. So, once again, I think we're setting ourselves up for failure. The questions I would like for you all to ask yourselves and ask our staff is, will Mr. Doherty be living in Austin? Will he be maintaining a job with the state of California? And what are the metrics for success after eight months? Are we considering a longer-term contract with Mr. Doherty? I just, I don't understand, again, how we could reasonably expect someone to make meaningful progress on our homelessness challenges in a mere eight months. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down and speaking on this issue. That gets us back up to the dials.
Mayor, I signed up for this. This gentleman signed up also.
I don't have you, but why don't you come down and speak then? It's okay, you're just not on the list, but I'm happy to call you.
And thank you for allowing me to speak as well. I didn't spend last night in the shelter. I've been there. I am not there now. I found my way out of homelessness into a job, and I slept in a comfortable bed last night, like many of you did. And I took a moment to write a few words down. Understanding the situation from both sides, having been both homeless and homed, I've landed firmly on the side that the solution cannot be found solely in government. I, for one, do not look for you to solve the problem. However, I do look for you to lead us in solving the problem. Whether you be a person of faith or not, and whether you be a person of great property or not, it does not matter. We do not find a real, if we do not find a real solution, homelessness will only continue to grow as it has. Simply throwing another government agency and money in the general direction of homelessness will never solve the problem. Individuals aimlessly dealing with various homeless people will only continue the status quo while we have our fellow humans suffering. The chronically homeless surround us, and yet they have become disconnected from society. If we wish to answer their plight, we must bring them back in. We have to find a way. I'm calling on the city council to lead us, to find a way to make us all whole. For when we are surrounded by those we do not truly accept, none of us are whole. As long as solutions are government-only, there will simply be more disconnect. As long as you believe money is the solution, there will simply continue to be that same disconnect. As long as you do not truly lead, we will continue to be a broken society. Make us whole. The homeless may need help, but they're not helpless. But many have lost hope, and they have become hopeless. This is a problem that can no longer be tabled. It cannot be pushed aside. We have a real problem. We need a real solution. And what we need is real community engagement. But to have that, we need real leadership. We need personal engagement from you. We need you to lead the way, and not from behind your desks or your computers. Help us find a way. As a society, we can no longer afford simple platitudes. We cannot afford answers that are at arm's length. We must get our hands dirty while we stand beside our fellow citizens and aid them in digging out of the holes where they have found themselves. As one who has been homed and gainfully engaged, today I ask you to find a way, not as government, but as our leaders. Thank you for hearing my heart. I am not unique in my compassion for these. And I'm not alone, but we need you to lead us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please go, sir? Sir? Would you please go to the clerk and give the clerk your name? Mr. Peña?
You have three minutes. Mayor, good morning again, Gustavo Gus Peña. These are individuals that I met on the streets. Cliff? I've known him for many years. This is my beautiful sister. I don't wanna cry, but it's got to stop. What is this gentleman, and I don't mean any disrespect, but you know I'm a former IRS investigator, I've done my job, and what is this gentleman gonna bring to Austin, Texas? Is it appropriate expenditure of funding? I don't know. Consulting services? Don't we have people already on health department staff to help us out? Don't we have now consultants to help out combat homelessness? We do. This is just $95,000 that shouldn't be allocated to this gentleman. We have experts here. Use the experts right here. You know, I don't want any retaliation to anybody, from anybody over there, because we spoke about the Salvation Army, Arch, and every, by the way, Mayor, Arch is still bad right now. I went down there undercover, dirt and all my face, grew up a beard. It's still bad. I want people to respect these individuals and other individuals that are experiencing homelessness at the Arch Salvation Army to be respected. My first bout with homelessness was 1975, when my mom ran me out of the house because she said, you're tough on your brothers and sisters. And I told you about this story because my wife, Carmen, and I helped you get elected over Martinez, which sometimes hurts. But we have to have a better process to help the homelessness, but not only the wraparound services, also to be self-sustaining in jobs and respect and love the people out there in the streets. A lot of people wanted, more people wanted to come over, but they were scared of retaliation. So I don't know what you're gonna do with this gentleman, Matthew Doherty, consulting services. We have so-called experts already on staff. Why are we spending money on somebody from the outside? And I bet you, it's not just gonna stop at $95,000, he's gonna want more. It ain't gonna happen on my watch, so think about it. And I've learned a lot about the law from municipal court and criminal district courts as an officer. I ran for justice with the P2, did a bad job of it. I ran for city council, mayor. But I'm still IRS investigator, still active. This ain't good. Love these people, respect these people, help the people out there in the Arch Salvation Army to respect them. I love them. And Cliff, thank you very much for bringing this out. My little, my sister here, everybody, everybody for having the guts to come over here to speak to each and every one of y'all. Repair it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say.
That brings us up to the...
I have one thing to say. Before the day is over, I need you to type in Tent City, USA, 2010, owned by Oprah. Check it out.
Thank you. All right, that brings us back up to the desks. How's our kitchen?
I wanted to just say a few things about this item. I wanted to first say thank you to all of you who came and shared your stories with us. I really appreciate that. I hope you understand and know that we are listening to you and that it is very helpful, personally to us, to hear your stories, and I know it's not easy, so I really appreciate you coming. I wanted to say thank you to you personally. I also wanted to say to our city manager that I would be expecting to see this person working with community stakeholders, and community stakeholders needs to include people living on the streets in our community. And so I know we have a homeless advisory council, we have other methods, other ways to talk with people. We need to make sure that this individual talks with people like folks who've come and talked to us today. So I also think that the gentleman who talked about the importance of, I forget how you put it, but metrics for success or understanding how we are achieving what we want to achieve with this. I know that city manager, you and the staff have been reporting to us on a monthly basis. I'm expected that'll continue, and you can continue to help us understand the, how Mr. Doherty is working with the community and how he's helping us to make a difference on this issue, so. So thank you. I wanted to, I hear the concerns that people are raising. I think that we can, I hope that we can, and I would expect that we could, that we do, with this contract, address the concerns that they're raising. Can you speak to that for a minute, city manager?
Thanks for addressing that, council member, absolutely. Those were some of the themes that we already have talked about with the consultant, and knowing that going forward, this is part of the Austin model to make sure that we are working with and from the community. And so both part of the work and then the reporting to council will be integral in determining how much we use his services in the future.
I missed the conversation, being able to participate in it earlier in the week because I wasn't in town. I think that part of the conversation that we've had this week relating to fires that occurred at a camp, I think it was important to note that that camp had been there for years. It's not the only camp like that that exists in our city that had been there for years. Somehow or another, the debate in this city or discussion about people experiencing homelessness has raised the question as to whether or not this was a challenge that was created by ordinances adopted by this council last year. It's not true. Ordinances didn't create any more people experiencing homelessness in our city. But I think that coming out of that conversation, and especially this past week, I think more and more people are recognizing that there are people experiencing homelessness all over our city. Those camps already existed. They existed before this council took any action. In fact, it was because those camps exist, because there are people experiencing homelessness in our city for some time, that this council made addressing homelessness the number-one priority of this council two years ago. We need to continue that work. It is unfortunate that there are loud voices that are trying to redirect the conversation away from dealing with this challenge in a way that we can productively solve that challenge and fix the challenge. But this council is going to stay focused on doing what we know works, focused on the data, and focused on getting this job done. To that end, manager, and I wasn't here, I want us to move forward on the motel strategy. I want us to start finding more places for people to go that are on our streets so that we can get them off our streets. We know what works because we've seen it work in several areas, but I want us, as a city and a government, to start better communicating to our community why it is that they should be hopeful about our ability to be able to meet this challenge head-on and in a productive and successful way. And we need to increase the inventory of places to be able to go because we need to find better and safer places for people to be, but also to be able to demonstrate the community that we can, in fact, get that done. I am gonna support this item today because I think it's an all-hands-on-deck issue. This is someone that has dealt with this challenge in virtually every city across the country, and will be able to bring to us his perspective on best practices. I am hopeful, but we need to move forward.
Councilmember Flanagan and councilmember Ruthria.
I have many thoughts about this, and Mayor, I agree with a lot...
And Mayor, I agree with a lot of what you said. I'm not going to support this contract today because I don't feel sufficiently educated about how we have adjusted for challenges that we experience under a homeless strategy officer. And without those challenges really accounted for, I'm not comfortable bringing in more outside support. I'm also concerned about, to the extent that we are continuing to do smaller deals upon this dais when we should be coordinating this effort through Echo. And if we were coordinating this effort through Echo, it would be simpler for us and Echo would be able to do the work with our nonprofits in a more coordinated way. I'm just not convinced.
Councilmember Ruria.
Yes, Mayor, I'm going, I'm going to support this item. You know, I, a year ago, around this date, I went down to Willow Creek and saw, off the riverside and saw some of these hidden camps. And it was, it was, you know, I just, it just, I was amazed that, you know, we, people were living like that in this kind of conditions that, that I saw down there. And then after I left, I, I saw all these people with candles keeping warm down in there in those tunnels. And, and two weeks later, that place actually caught on fire and burned, you know? And we're in the process now of looking for a solution of trying to keep people from living down there by putting these, some iron gates there so they keep people from having to live in this kind of conditions. But you're correct, we need to find different locations for, in different sites all over town so that people can stay there. I mean, people are already and have been living like this, you know, since I was born here. 69 years ago, they were homeless. And we call them hopeful back then, you know? And before they built Town Lake there, before the dam came up, that's where they were living at. There were communities down there. And they're in the floods, which is floods, you know, here in Austin, especially around Halloween and Memorial Day. That's when we get the big floods. It would wash everybody, everything they own down the river. And, and, you know, but we need to keep, we need to have the resources to be able to control it. But unfortunately, we have a state governor here in Texas that just refused to work with us. You know, that, that location they have in my district in Montoplis is, is deplorable. I went down there and I, some of my colleagues went down there and saw the living conditions that they were living in. I mean, they have a one, one water hose and two wooden boxes with no roof on it where they have to take their showers, where they take their shower. They have two little small tubs with no drain, a bucket underneath to catch the, when you unplug the, the drain so you can get the water unplugged and get the water run off into it. And that's how, where they wash their clothes. That's how they wash their clothes. And, you know, $95,000, I think that it would become a, a well-spent money for having the resources of someone that has the connections and know-how to go out and get the resources and coordinate this problem that we're facing here. And this is a national problem. It's not a local problem. It's everywhere, no matter where you go. So I want to be supporting this.
I just wanted to ask if staff could speak more directly to the anticipated role. I think we're all extrapolating from the little information that we got on Tuesday and, and perhaps you can address the concerns.
Sure. Good morning, council members. My name is Chris Shorter. I am the Assistant City Manager for Outcomes Associated with Health, Environment, Culture, and Lifelong Learning. This engagement, this contract is intended to be very strategic and tailored. I will say that...
Can you pull the mic up a little?
Sure. All right. Is that better?
Yes.
Yep. So this contract is intended to be tailored and very strategic. I will also say that we intend to, to actually conduct a recruitment during this eight-month period with the department, with the Austin Public Health to, to recruit a lead, a head of the Homeless Services Division as we evolve and move homeless services within public health. I'll say that we are intending during this eight-month period to ensure that Matthew Dougherty is working with other consultants scheduled to, to be here, including the audit and review of our contracts and grants. And that during that engagement, we fully intend to engage folks who are experiencing homelessness here in Austin. And so, as mentioned earlier, there is a, an advisory council made up and composed of individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness. And we intend fully to have Matthew Dougherty, once this contract is negotiated and executed, if supported by you all today, we fully intend to have him engage those who are experiencing homelessness through the advisory council, along with other, other, other consultants evaluating the system. I'll also say that our deputy city manager met with providers, those organizations who are providing direct services to those who are experiencing homelessness. And there was certainly expression from the community of service providers that the need for strategic planning is certainly, could certainly be helpful for our system. Matthew Dougherty, as, as mentioned earlier, brings a wealth of experience. We hope to leverage that experience to bring more resources, ensure that those resources that are available to us nationally and through the federal government are being leveraged here in Austin. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I think the latter part got closer to that. So you mentioned that it would be a strategic and targeted contract. And at the end, you mentioned some information about helping us to leverage federal funds and doing strategic planning. Can you speak a little bit more on the strategic and targeted nature of the scope of the work that you would be looking for in this contract?
Sure. As today's decision really is for authorization and execution, we have not fully negotiated with Mr. Dougherty the nature of the scope of work of the contract. I will say that, given his experience, we intend to make sure that we, because he has engaged lead agencies around the country, that he is working with our lead agency with, so I should say with Echo and our providers to ensure that strategically, that we are engaging within the community of providers through Echo and that we, as a government, are engaging Echo in, in an appropriate way. So essentially ensuring that our system is operating, is, is operating at its most effective, in an effective way. So I heard the concerns of the council member and want to make sure that we, that we articulate that, that ultimately, we absolutely support Echo and its role and that we want to make sure that as a system, we are operating at our, at our most effective. And having a national consultant weigh in and assess while we are recruiting for a lead to support the homeless services division and lead the homeless service division makes a lot of sense and could be very helpful for us as we leverage, leverage our partners within the provider community.
So this is not conceived of as a substitution for having a homeless services officer, although that role may evolve now that's moving to public health, but it's a step along the way to moving forward with that? And would you say this is also bringing expertise that we do not currently have within the city?
That is absolutely right, that this is not a substitute for a permanent FTE. We are, as mentioned in previous work sessions, working to evolve and move homeless services so that it is coordinated within Austin Public Health. And with that, we are scheduled and to begin a recruitment to find a lead or a head for the homeless services division. And so this is not a replacement for a homeless strategy officer. Really, this is, again, a strategic and targeted engagement so that we are doing this the right way and properly leveraging federal, national organizations, as well as our service providers here, here in Austin. And your second question, council member?
I think you answered. I think you answered it. So is this funding coming essentially from the funding that was set aside previously for the homeless strategy officer, or is this additional funding? And if it is additional funding, where is it coming from?
Actually, I would ask Public Health to answer the question of whether, of where the funding is, is coming from. The, there may be additional, I would have to get back to your office in terms of making sure.
It looks like Public Health is here.
Good morning. Stephanie Hayden, Austin Public Health. We have these existing funds in our Austin Public Health budget.
For homelessness or the Austin Public Health?
For homelessness.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion on the dais, Councilwoman Poole.
Thanks. And I, I think what, what we're seeing is some continued nervousness in, in the community over how the city is proceeding with trying to help people who are experiencing homelessness. And that's, that's completely understandable. I think, I think we're still trying to square up what happened with the previous homeless services officer, the HSO. So, so I have a question if, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Shorter, or, or another staffer. Can you please describe for us all so we can understand the difference between, or the relationship between the homeless strategy officer and our homelessness strategy division?
Sure. Happy to. So that, as you remember last year, when we introduced the concept of a homeless strategy officer that would essentially report directly to the city, into the city manager's office and be supported by the city manager, that homeless strategy officer engaged council directly. We have, through memo and previous discussions at work sessions, decided to reorganize, bring the homeless strategy office, if you will, into Austin Public Health. And with that move, we are, we are with a homeless strategy division or homeless services division is what we're calling, calling it. The lead for that division ultimately will be, will serve as the coordinator, operational day-to-day of all homeless services throughout, throughout the city. That individual will also, as we begin to ramp up recruitment, work with our community partners and service providers directly. It's important that we, that we distinguish what a homeless, standalone homeless strategy office would have been and was for the city and what the homeless services division will be, ultimately having day-to-day support that stretches across our enterprise. Many agencies participate and, and are involved in the day-to-day support of our homeless population. And so having someone, an individual lead a division of staff who have the full support of Austin Public Health, who has been doing this work with our providers for, for, for quite some time day-to-day, is a much better approach and a much broader approach day-to-day. So I hope that, that answers your question in terms of the differences between a standalone homeless strategy officer, one individual FTE, versus a full division of employees who are working to, to support all of the services and programs that go into supporting our population of homeless individuals.
It sounds to me like you're still crafting what the division would look like. Is that a fair description?
We actually, we have been since announced in late fall, working to pull together the FTEs and the support. I will say, and I'll ask Director Hayden to sort of speak to where we are in the, in the buildup of the division, but we have been working for at least a month and a half to, to begin to pull together the, the division. Do you want to?
Vella Carmen has been named as the acting executive over that division. And we have also moved over an administrative person to, to help her administratively. And so over the next month, we will continue to build out that division in order to provide the support that she needs. And, and then there's a, there's an internal group to the Health Department so we can also be abreast of everything that's happening within health as well.
So it's important as we, I'm sorry, man. It's important as we talk about this consulting engagement, that we not, that we keep it sort of separate from and not confuse it with the permanent structure that we are developing for, to support our city and to support our, the provision, if you will, of services. The consultant engagements, both on the Barbara Poppy and her team and associates, as well as Matthew Dougherty with your approval today, that these are very important strategic engagements that will help us improve our system, help make sure that we are bringing the best thinking forward here in Austin. But this will not be a replacement for a much more permanent organizational structure and division of staff who are already here, already here in Austin and have been working with our population for quite some time.
I think that, I think the big question that I haven't had answered yet, and maybe it's because the negotiation hasn't been completed, is I do think there was a good point that Mr. Thornton raised about Mr. Dougherty's time and, and as a contract employee here with the city and his responsibilities in other parts of the country and whether we will have his undivided attention as, in all, in all ways to ensure that. So I, for me, that's a little bit of a red flag, coming hard on the heels of our experience with Ms. Harris. I also have, there's differing levels of philosophy, I think, city manager, on the dais about when the city council takes responsibility for contracting with outside entities on the negotiate and execute. I'm less willing to allow both to happen together, especially in high-profile contracts and high-dollar contracts, although I wouldn't necessarily say $95,000 is extraordinarily high, but it is above the level that the city council has set for you to be able to approve the contract. So it, it puts it squarely in the lap of the dais. For me, I want to know the elements that have been negotiated before I agree to signing off on the contract because I think that is the level of diligence that is necessary and particularly in, in high-profile hires. And when we are trying to frankly knit together the fabric of trust in our community on all sides of this issue, are we really moving in the right direction and will it be sustained? And can we, are we being transparent about it? And how accountable are we? And I believe that the level of transparency and accountability in public, for a public position like a council is paramount. So recognizing all of the concerns here, I, I am not sure, well, I, I wouldn't, I cannot vote to, to execute. I would possibly be willing to allow this to go forward on a negotiate so that this dais could see what the elements of the contract are. But if this moves forward as negotiate and execute, I will be voting no. This doesn't say anything at all. This has nothing to do with the good work that our staff are, are assiduously working to, to proceed with. It goes more to ensuring that we're doing, that, that we on the dais know all the particulars of what it is that we're approving. So if I might make an amendment, a friendly amendment, hopefully, that we simply negotiate the contract and then bring it back for public, for the public scrutiny and for the dais to scrutinize so that we know precisely what, what we have in hand. So I'd like to make that, I'd like to make, I can't make a walking, I know, a talking amendment.
But I'll make sure that, that opportunity comes back. Mr. Manager?
Just, I want to speak to two things, council member. One, with all of our contracts, I mean, that's an up-to amount. And so if that consultant does not perform the work, they won't get paid for it. And so, you know, as we continue the process of negotiating with this, with this consultant, if, if we were to move forward, we would make that determination of those milestones and make sure that it's transparent to the council and the community on exactly what they would get paid for and at what, what milestones would mark that, that time period. The other thing that our Assistant City Manager, you know, made a lot of great points on how we can see the benefits of having this work be housed in the Department of, of Public Health. But I wanted to also reinforce the continued executive oversight over all of the work that we're doing around homelessness, which is the number one priority of this council. And so... And so our Deputy City Manager, we have two Assistant City Managers, our Director of Public Health, meeting on a regular basis, uh, with the staff from these various departments to provide that executive leadership. So I didn't want to, uh, neglect how critical it is to still have the city manager's office very engaged on a regular basis on this, uh, critical priority for our community.
Thank you, um, City Manager. So, um, Mayor, I would like to make-
Let me give some other people a chance to talk.
I have a question.
I was about to make a motion.
I know, but there might be some other people that haven't had a chance to talk yet. I promise you, we won't push this through without having the opportunity to consider that. Councilor, sorry, you had your light on before. Do you want to speak or no?
I'll wait.
Okay. Councilor Toto.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate, first of all, I just want to appreciate, um, those who came down to, to speak with us today and, and the feedback that you provided. Um, and, and because I've heard from, um, you know, multiple constituents, including those who are here today, I did want to speak to the contract. Having seen Echo, Echo brought in several consultants over the last couple of years and, you know, they, I believe, offered real value to our community of professionals. Um, the, the strategies they were able to suggest and the analysis they provided as outside observers, but with lots of familiarity of best practices across the city, I mean, across the country, I, I regard as very valuable, um, as we continue to strengthen and really focus in our efforts on how best to end homelessness in this community. So, you know, I see this investment as not in lieu of the really important direct services that we need to continue supporting and, as well as the direct investments we're going to continue to make in housing and in shelter. But I do see it as a, as a value enhancer to have that, that additional expertise come in. Um, just to offer a couple of examples, those consultants helped look at, at the situation here in Austin and provide, provided leadership and guidance for, or at least the guidance that led to our social service and our housing providers doing the pilot program once, over the summer, a couple summers ago, and that led to our housing-focused approach at our emergency shelter. I think that's a really important direction for our city to have taken. And again, that, that was guided in large part by, by the conversations that, um, those consultants helped lead. Several of us on this dais, uh, talked before, before the hiring of, of our homeless strategy officer about the deep, um, and broad base of expertise we have in our community on this issue and that we have here at our city. And so, you know, at, at that time, I think several of us spoke up and said, we have really great expertise on our staff, and I'm just going to underscore that. We have a very talented staff who have been working on, on these issues and working in collaboration with Echo and our other housing and social service providers. For years, we have strategies that are innovative, that are in place, that I believe will yield really good results and have already. And so, you know, it's, this is not in any way, again, it's not in any way, um, an investment in lieu of those direct services, and it's not, um, it is not a suggestion that we need to go outside our own community to seek that level of expertise, um, because we don't have it here. We all, I believe this is an ecosystem and each one of, of those parties really plays a role, those with lived experience, um, our providers, our city staff, and that occasional assistance from outside consultants. So I'm not concerned and, and would be possibly concerned if we expected an outside consultant to be here on the ground all the time. You know, I see that as sort of short-term infusions of expertise and best practices. And so I appreciate what you said about it being up to ninety-five thousand, that perhaps the contract would come in lower. I do want to say, I think it's helpful, I'm going to support it today as it's drafted, but it would be helpful when we have contracts of this sort to have a better sense really of, of what they're, what they're doing, and especially in an area where we've had a lot of conversation, how that particular expertise is intended to kind of work with the ecosystem of professionals who are, are already working on this issue. But I, I think, you know, I've been following Matthew Dougherty and, and his work, um, nationally, and I think he's a, I think he'll be a, a good, um, resource here for Austin.
Okay. I spoke to the larger issues earlier, I'm going to speak to the contract issues and then go to Councilor Poole. I think bringing in somebody as a consultant who's had a vantage point of being able to see what's happening in all fifty states around the country will be a really valuable thing for us to have. And, um, I know that, that he has advised our staff in the, in the past in his role at the, at the, at the White House. Again, I feel a sense of, of urgency and would love to, to get that person engaged. Councilor Flanagan, I, I hear the concern associated with Echo and I, uh, believe very strongly in the role of Echo in this community. In fact, I think a lot of that is, is, is federally designated, uh, and I think that it's real important we do that. And I don't see this as undercutting that at all, but I think it's actually, is something that may actually facilitate that happening in our community in a way that lets the, the resources that exist in our community actually, um, align, uh, to, to move forward in the most expeditious and efficient way. It's a ninety-five thousand dollar contract, so I'm comfortable, uh, voting for it to, to, to be, to, to concur with. Councilmember Toto would, would support it as, as written as well. Councilor Poole.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't get the sense that there's support for having the contract come back for execution, so I won't make that amendment. I do ask that staff come and show me the contract, um, right before it gets signed. I would like to have, uh, knowledge about what's in it so that when I talk with, um, members of the community, I can speak with more authority about it. Councilmember Kitchen and I went earlier this week to a meeting of the Homelessness Council, and it was, um, it was a really good, uh, experience. And, um, you know, we, we pledged to help them in every possible way we can. If I were to go back there, um, next month to meet with them again, and they say, well, you just hired Mr. Dougherty, how is that going to help me? I want to be able to look them in the eye and say, we're looking for him to do A, B, and C. That's what I want, that's why I'm asking for this level of, of transparency and information. So, uh, City Manager, could I have that, please?
Yeah.
Thanks so much, I really appreciate it.
If I can.
Sir, a motion to approve item number thirty-five. Uh, Councilmember Harper-Madison makes the motion as they're second, Councilor Sar. Take a vote, those in favor, please raise your hand.
I was waiting to talk until that motion arrived.
Okay.
No, I, I think it's, um, I, I appreciate, uh, bringing Mr. Dougherty in. I think it's important to highlight this, that working with him is just a really small fraction of the much, much larger city investment and city commitment. Unceremoniously, on consent, we moved forward, uh, a lot of nine percent housing tax credit proposals that could create hundreds of permanent supportive housing units at a rate that we have not done, uh, in this city in just one big step. That is a multimillion-dollar investment, uh, that will take hundreds of people to put together, but that can house people permanently in this community who need permanent supportive housing. Folks that are the most vulnerable and that have been most chronically on the street deserve that, uh, level of care and support, and that's something that we did on consent that is a much larger investment, uh, than any one or two people who are important in helping us coordinate and think about this. But, but it's oftentimes the really, really big stuff that we're doing that sometimes goes by on consent and, and these other pieces that are important for us to discuss and, and, and work on. Um, I also want to mention to the folks that have come and shared their stories and experiences with us, though, that I think it's, um, you have a council here ready to take you up on the offer of continuing to, uh, walk on the streets and to speak with people that, um, are not housed and for us to continue to recognize our own, um, our own immense privilege of, of being housed. And so thank you for coming and pushing us, um, on that work because there, we still need a lot of pushing if we want to actually, um, have good, safe places for folks to go, um, that are not just the shelter, but good permanent places and homes for, for people to go to. So thank you for coming and pushing us, and I'm going to keep pushing myself and, and I think, asking the city to push to, to actually buy the hotel rooms and to build the permanent supportive housing and to do it much faster than we've ever done it before.
Councilor Poole.
To be fair, the nine percent tax credits was the city endorsing those applications to the state for consideration for award of, of the monies, so, right?
Sure, but then we have, at Housing Committee, recognized a lot of bond dollars-
Right.
-that we would actually have to invest in order to make those projects happen. And so those projects only happen through the federal, state, and local government, all jointly investing-
Right.
-uh, and selecting these sites together. And it would be, um, it would be a really big step on the city's part to land all, land hundreds of permanent supportive housing.
It would be amazing if we got every single one of those applications that we, and that's the largest, uh, group of nine percent tax credits that I think I've seen in the five years that I've been on council. So I absolutely agree. The reason why I bring it up, though, is I didn't want a misunderstanding in the community that all of those units will be built. We hope they will be, but it goes through a really long process and we won't know for months what the outcomes of those. So, thanks.
Okay. Item number thirty-five has been moved in second. If those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Mr. Flanagan votes no, the others voting aye, it passes. So thirty-five passes. Thank you all for coming.